Okay, we're gonna get started, folks.
Okay, you're on. Speak nice and loud and clear, please.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Yarmouth Board of Selectment meeting of January 9th, 2018. Happy New Year to everybody. We will please start by standing in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited by your justice for all.
Thank you. As most of you know, we had some water damage in the hearing room, so we're here tonight. We don't have any microphones. They're videotaping the meeting. It will be played back on Channel 18 later, so we have to speak loud. So the first item on the agenda is public comments and announcements. If you'd like to come up, introduce yourself and please speak, Christine, so that the people at home are able to hear you come.
Thank you. I also have been bringing with me, Susan Bria is to my left here, I'd like to show you what you will not see in the press because the press announcement from the agency and the proponent yesterday on Vineyard Wind sent out their press release late in the day for events that were happening all day long. And you need to know as a Board of Selectman that at 2:15, 60 of your residents gathered in the ice and the snow, including people walking with canes on the ice-filled street down there to protest Vineyard Wind and the arrival and the plan to land the cables at that point. What you also will not hear from the press or see in the press is the fact that approximately 120 to 140 people packed a room at the Cape Codder last night to talk about, in opposition, the majority, actually, there was no comment in favor of it, the opposition to Vineyard Wind and what is going on. And so it was a very, very interesting experience to find that it didn't seem to be worthwhile that the press would know about this, but you need to know how the residents here are going. Some of the people who testified last night included Lostrumens Association, Fisherman's Group, other people, none of whom had had any conversation, people from the Hana's Yocca, people who had not heard in the least anything going on about this project. And so I have some questions for you tonight because amongst the things that the proponents said was that for several years they've been working, and they've been working with the town of Yarmouth on this. Now, we find this very, very interesting because we are a butters, and as a matter of fact, as a butters down in Lewis Bay, we pay a lot of real estate taxes in this town. We have civic associations that are well-known to people, and yet conversations have never been held with us about things that are going to affect us directly and our lives and our properties down there. So either they're not telling the truth, which might be a possibility, because in their proposal was some absolutely fascinating things. The letters of support are all from Oak Bluffs. They are from various people with elected offices there. The one letter that they have that came from anyone down in this area, and I have a copy of it that I will give to you tonight, came from the town of Barnstable. And if you recall, when the proponent was here before the Board of Selectment passed, said they had an understanding with Barnstable. No, what Barnstable submitted, the only letter in this, is saying, "We need to know more. We've been violently opposed to Cape Wind. We have no interest in Cape Wind, and we need to know what's going on with this." They made a lot of statements in there, including the fact they've met with you in Yarmouth and he talked about your concerns about the fireworks in Lewis Bay. And so whether or not that's true or not, I don't know, because Barnstable provides fireworks. It was kind of a fascinating side comment. They also did a lot of smoke and mirrors about what this is. It has to do with the fact that it will cost them less to land here. They intend to do their construction during the winter months from Labor Day through May, which means they will be disrupting Higgins Crow Road, the site of this only police facility in the town, and two of your schools and things while they tear up the roads. You're gonna lose all capacity for perhaps future sewerings in those streets because their cables and the neat things they have needs. There are so many, excuse me, I'm headband run cutters. There have been so many environmental studies and things that have not been done in that bay and that are going to be detrimental. You lay those cables in there, and if anything ever happens and you find out this has been a disaster, and all you have to do is go read some of the European studies on cables and things that can happen, and you should be very, very concerned. You will maybe no turning back on that. And so the idea, they've been saying, oh, they're giving money. You wouldn't believe the kinds of money they quoted that they're giving to the town of Yarmouth. Now, it's kind of interesting, you know, between property taxes and betterments and all this other stuff that went on and on. It was quite a proposal and quite a smoke and mirrors. And the other part of it that absolutely fascinated me was that the date for the submission of all comments is January 16th, which was kind of fascinating because the proposal went in December 20th. And what we found out from a variety of people, where a number of offices were closed, we're talking Christmas Vacation Act, the date of January 16th was set by the proponent. It had nothing to do with anybody else. And there was a question raised with him yesterday, could the date be extended? And the state basically confirmed, said, "Well, you know, what do you think?" And they hemmed and hawed and got around it. They have other landing sites, very, very appropriate, over Couples Beach and Hyannis, but it will cost them more money, and they're not interested in that. And so I'm saying you've got issues in which you're dredging, if you read the reports, dredging, anchorage, all kinds of things are really major, major problems. You have a bay out there since '81 when I've been here that has been changing with the accretion and erosion of sand. You don't know what you've got out there. Some of the research indicates that your eelgrass and your shellfish and other things will suffer. There are things that we do not know about this, and yet they're ready to roll, folks. They're ready to roll next year and get this built. And when it gets built, it's the end. And I'm telling you, I don't understand the smoke and mirrors. And I guess I have some questions for you. Have you indeed been working for several years with them without ever contacting any of us who have a set, who would have any kind of vested interest in this? Or are they doing again another smoke and mirrors in terms of what's going on? So that's my question. I really would like to know, as a taxpayer resident, someone as you well know, has been very involved in this community, you know how to get hold of them.
I'll answer that question. Since 2013, since I've been on the board, the answer is no.
Thank you. Then let me tell you, this is the proponent you're dealing with. And if you think about it...
That is not what they said last night.
No, that's not what they said last night.
The number of times they have met with staff here, and they repeatedly talked about the money, the money, the money, it was really a dreadful conversation. So amplifying what Chris said, I think it's very important that this board, this Board of Selectmen make a very clear public statement about where you are on this project because based on what was said last night, there are a lot of people think it is a done deed that you have signed off on the cable coming across Lewis Bay. You have, they talked about projects and how much money they're gonna give and how you're gonna spend it. And this was in a public forum. And that's the impression they left. So if that is not correct, I think it's very important as elected officials that you go on record as saying you have not taken a position on the cable, you have not accepted any money, whatever you need to say to clarify, because it left a very damaging impression last night, particularly since the last time is here, Selectmen Stone asked me to supply to all of you a list of contacts for the Association, which I did. And we certainly expected someone from the town to reach out to us, and reach out to us, and no one did. Fast forward to last night, and we're sitting in a room, and they're talking about the number of times that they all met with your staff and perhaps you, and we're all sitting there thinking, why didn't anyone contact us? Here we are, the residents and the taxpayers. It was no outreach to us, and certainly hasn't been, and even tonight, I said a month ago, anything that's going on in West Yarmouth, please let us know. I find out tonight that the proposal for the Yarmouth Titans on Route 28, which is in our neighborhood, is up for discussion tonight. No one in my neighborhood knows about it. So it really needs to be, I don't know what we need to do to make this happen. This is not rocket science. You have the list of people that you need to call. Call any of us, and we've committed to calling the others. But the comments that were made last night, the lack of public input, the people are starting to feel you don't even care. There's been no outreach at all to the people in West Yarmouth, and this is a critical, critical issue to them. You're trying to make a decision or come to a decision with not enough information. You're being told by the proponent they're gonna have all sorts of litigation efforts. You don't even know what can be mitigated because there's no universal study of the bay, which needs to be done. This is not, this is not simply putting a sidewalk on Higgins Crow Road. This is a natural public good, this is a natural resource that you as students of this town are obligated to protect, and no one sees that.
And there's a substation planned right on the top of Addicks Way, a major substation. And Barnstable at this point is arguing that they don't want to tie into a substation over there because of the environmental issues and the other things that are concerned. And so there's a lot of stuff that's been, an incredible amount, I keep using the term smoke and mirrors, but I'm telling you, it's very interesting. One of their lead engineers here last night was the lead engineer for Cape Wind. I mean, the people were seeing, you know, similar kinds of people and the dovetail and all, and the letter from Barnstable clearly states they have no interest in anything that would tie in or do anything with Cape Wind and that. And they have not signed off on any of this. But as I said, if you go listen to them, they've been told you're in favor. If you listen here, you were told, remember, we have a letter of understanding. No, they have a letter questioning them, and I'll show you what it is. And it's the only one in the packet from this side of the ocean. Everything else was out of the intact. And there are serious, serious environmental issues, both on the water and on the land when they land. And you guys, you're being played. Either we're being played or you're being played, and there's some stuff going on here you need to know about. So that's it. I'll give you a copy of the letter, but I have, he's the only proponent.
I think we've had the attorney came to one of our meetings and supplied this week.
I wanna make a couple of comments, ladies, on what you just said. I can't tell you what interaction Vineyard Wind has had with staff. I can only, my statement was limited to what I had as a member of the Board of Selectmen. The first was when they came and made their presentation at that public meeting. That's the first way in contact I had. With respect to the visit, the site visit yesterday, I got an email, and I'm gonna say it was somewhere just before 2:00, that that was happening.
At 2:15.
I didn't open that email at that time. It was substantially later that I actually saw it, but I looked at the delivery time, and I too was surprised that, why are we getting this now? It's almost...
It was on the 29th, though, because I went back and looked myself. It was forwarded to us on the 29th.
Really?
But there was no press release to the press?
Yeah, but the notice of the visit was, I guess I was concerned too. I had went back to my email. We were going on the 29th. Just to clarify, I'm not trying to...
No, it's okay.
I had to go back and look because I was overtaken by the timing.
But I think, I think their point's well-taken. I think on major, being that they took the time to give us their contact information on major events like this that deal with Cape Wind, I think a special effort should be made to make sure that these groups are notified. That's my personal position.
And I think just for the record as well, in terms of this board, staff, I think, has been working with them for some time, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's a position of this board, there's not been a position of this board. As a matter of fact, they asked us for a letter of support prior to their submission, and there was no letter offered.
Let's just mention, that came up last night. You know what their response was to that was, "It's on its way."
That's what they said, smoke and mirrors.
They said, "It's on its way. They are working on it." A treaty was supposed to be voted on, I think, on one of the last meetings. It was pulled, but the very next sentence was, "But they're working on it. We're gonna get it." That's the impression they're leaving.
So our concern is as they make these proposals, and they're telling you they're gonna give you money, are you really gonna see it? Because the rest of this in terms of going forward has not been exactly accurate, and you need to be concerned. Vida?
Vida Morris. Thank you very much, ladies, for bringing up the fact that we don't seem to get proper notification from this board or whoever's supposed to be doing it about some areas, especially those construction projects with the presentation coming up. I've said that how many times, I don't know. I'm so glad to hear that somebody else is noticing the same thing, so I'm very grateful for that. I don't know how many of you saw this article in the Register, that sawdust is tested as nitrogen fix. Any of you seen it? Well, this is, I suggest that you, this is the latest issue before tomorrow, December 28th, yeah, December 28th. So, how many times have I asked to disentangle from that three-town project going? Because all it is, and with the same consultant, they, you know, we are not going to make any progress whatsoever. It's gonna be the $350 million project. Now, this thing, what happens is that they use, each individual taxpayer, when they redo their septic system, would be required to install this sawdust and various layers or what have you. The cost to the taxpayer in addition to the septic system would be $2,400. And each, so you're not encumbering anybody else, whoever does it, and apparently it takes care of the nitrogen situation very, very well. It's been done for about 17 years in Canada, and it eliminates all kinds of, you know, I don't understand how all of this works particularly, but apparently you need, if you don't, if you do the big pipe solution, you need to have buildings and everything to re-treat something or de-treat or whatever. And this is, this is a perfect solution, and as far as I can tell, it is still being tested here on the Cape, I think on the base, but I think that's something that really we should be, as I said, disentangling ourselves from that group. I don't know what they are doing, but you better read it and you better take very good notice of it. This obviously is something, and especially since the biggest proponent of all this big pipe situation is now gone, thank goodness, goodbye, and hopefully the consultant will go the same way. And we just need to retrench ourselves on that subject. I don't know how many times I've already said this, and we just need to do that in view of this. Now, the marijuana situation. Enough with the moratorium. The next time the town council is here, absolutely have him do the wording for a ban, especially in view of what the Justice Department just issued and being reinforced by the new U.S. Attorney here in Massachusetts. Finally, the supremacy of the federal law is going to be enforced. As Tom Sullivan pointed out some months ago to you people, that that, I mean, what was going on before this was total lawlessness, and we need to get ourselves on the record that we are putting in a ban, and as I said, enough with the moratorium. Now, okay. Any of the projects that the so-called clean and green, usually involving solar panels or the turbines, wind turbines, needs to keep in mind something that was on the news not long ago, and that is that if the electric cars take off, they will require power to such an extent that these two sources, these new clean sources, would in no way, shape, or form even begin to supply. So that anything that is online already in terms of, I guess, oil and coal and whatever, definitely will have to stay online, and maybe even some of the closed mines will have to be reopened. That's how serious, I mean, everything has to be kept in perspective because people who present these clean and green projects, you know, make it sound as though they will take care of everything, no problem, and we're gonna be so clean and green, and in the meantime, it's not really the situation.
Happy New Year to you. Thank you.
I have to admit, admit that that was one of the rabble-rousers yesterday over at the protest. One thing that Christine bring up, I asked a question in regards to, they made a comment, they all written comments have to be in by January 16th. If you're familiar with environmental studies at the airport, it's an awful short period of time. They usually run 60, 90 days for comment. So that's another thing that came up, and then I noticed one of the company, environmental companies that was there, Epsilon. Epsilon handled the airport. And when we were in advisory committee, we had a lot of problems dealing with them, trying to get information out of them, especially with the groundwater pollution and now, as you know, the contaminated soil, which disappeared and nobody knows where it went. So that's the company that you're dealing with. I'll just touch on that briefly. But if any resident wants to get this in, they get until January 16th, short period of time. They haven't been working on this much longer than just coming down with this site survey. I agree with Chris saying a lot of it. The other thing I wanna bring up on appointments tonight, we have two appointments in regards to Economic Development Committee. Just a couple of things caught my eye because I do read the packets. I don't know how many people do. There's one gentleman who was put in, Chris, he states that he works for a clean energy company, but he doesn't name the company. So I'd like to know if possible, what's the name of the company he works for? And the second part with this gentleman, he's a part-time resident. I know under the Selectmen's Authority, we refer back to the charter, which I looked at the charter, the charter refers to general laws. So I'm not seeing much in the general laws in this. I think it has to be researched a little bit. Part-time residents, part-time residents can't vote at town meeting. You know what I mean? So why would a part-time resident be coming down here pushing for economic development? I can understand that, maybe to cut his taxes, but there's an underlying question about that, especially with a part-time resident. I think there should be just full-time residents on that. The second gentleman is on that committee, is a realtor in town. All right? I could see his point, since he lives here and he has a business here. But the question is, on the Ethics Commission, I believe this is something that should be clarified, where there's no conflict of interest with this or even a perceived conflict dealing with the realtor and everything in town. I think the key word is perceived on that. There can't be any conflict of interest. I mean, I'm all for economic development, but I'd like to see it done right, too. So that's something that I think the board should question that as appointments tonight, maybe hold them off until the questions are answered. That would be my suggestion to the board. Okay? That's it. I'd like to keep a shut suite.
Thank you. I would like to offer an apology. I obviously spoke more forcefully, a little bit louder perhaps than I might have done to you, because I understand you work very hard on behalf of this of the Board of Selectmen. What you really were hearing from me earlier is just a real, real understanding of just how played things are being done. And I guess with lifelong love of Lewis Bay, you know, since 1981 and all, I just have so many fears about what's going on with this. And it's really quite angering to find the numbers of people, like I said, from Lostrumens Association, Fisherman's Association, all of whom, you know, proponents claiming, they talked to and now saying, no, you know, I'm the chairman of it. And the guy who wrote the letter on behalf, I guess, of the fishermen actually is on the payroll for Vineyard Wind. I mean, there was a lot of stuff that came out last night, and I have to admit, I was very, very upset and angry about that and about the whole piece of it going down and with no press covering this, with large numbers of people turning out and really questioning it. And so my attempt, actually tonight in speaking to you, was not to be as angry as I am, but just to say, this has been a process that has not involved the people and the things that should have gone on. It isn't just our neighborhood association. We're just finding it's from everybody, you know, it's from town of Barnstable, it's from the Yoclips, it's from all of these people. The Steamship Authority, when I talked to them Tuesday night, did not know about the proposal. Can you tell me, how did that happen? You know, so this, so my anger really was coming out earlier, and I just tried to say to you, you know, watch out, watch out, watch out. There's something pretty awful going on here, and I don't believe that the protections that are gonna be necessary to preserve that bay for another lifetime of people to enjoy it are necessarily there right now. So that's it. I apologize.
Well, I appreciate your questions, but you have always been a fierce advocate for what you believe in. I knew your civic involvement has been very long in this town, and we appreciate that. So I'm glad you have passion.
Well, no, but I do appreciate the fact that you sit here and get beat up. We can't.
Does anybody else would like to address the board?
Madam Chairman, can I just make a point of clarification? I got an email just a few moments ago that the comment period that you referred to has been extended to the 30th.
Fabulous. That's because we demanded it.
Good job.
Good. Go on. Good. That was the last couple of minutes of that meeting last night, was asking for it, they wouldn't commit to it. So we haven't heard yet, so thank you. That's good news.
Just a question to follow up on what you just said. They usually have those comment periods, 60 to 90 days, and when did it stop?
I don't have that information. I know that your request for an extension was heard.
Good. We're getting there.
Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to address the, we're seeing nobody. I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Selectmen Stone for our public hearings.
Thank you, Tracy. First matter is Seadog Pub. Did I assume you're Peter?
Hi, Peter.
Seado?
Yes.
How you doing, Peter?
Good.
Good. I'll read the notice sent to the record, and then you can go forward at that point. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as a local licensing authority, has received an application for an amendment to weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses from Seadog Pub LLC, doing business Seadog Pub. 23 whites have South Yarmouth to add a jukebox in the lounge area. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 9th, 2018, in the hearing room at Town Hall, which has been moved. 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, meeting begins at 6:00 p.m. Written comments will be accepted in the Selectmen's Office until 4:30 on Friday, January 5th, 2018. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing.
We actually added a jukebox, or we're going to add a jukebox into the pub area, which will actually be only allowed to play radio ads, so there'll not be any swears or anything like that. And there'll be certain criterias set up until 11 o'clock, so certain genres of music can't be played until 11 o'clock also.
Should we be looking at 11 a.m. to 1 a.m.?
Correct.
And Monday through Sunday?
Correct.
Anything else you wanna say? Okay, does anyone in the public have anything they wanna say about this? Seeing now, I'll go to the board, anybody in the board?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Make a motion to approve the application.
All those in favor of proposing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Tracy, you have a motion? You have a motion, who put it?
Second.
Second, but I are. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? Do you have, you had some ring cards under?
I already have one.
You already have them? Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any way we can make that administrative? I'm just out of curiosity, I mean, those types of licenses, can they be made administrative?
No, it has to go through the board, you're the agent.
Yeah, and I mean, this one is pretty cut and dry, but some of them, not all of them, maybe, you know. We had one other jukebox hearing so far, and it was handled pretty quickly as well. Okay, the next one's a change in manager for the 99 Restaurants.
Hi, Jorge.
Good, how are you?
I'm Dan Truesdale, 99 Restaurants.
Okay, Dan, you want to tell us about the change in manager for the 99?
Yes. Couple, 10 weeks ago, change was made within our division, and the general managing partner at the Yarmouth location was transferred to Plymouth, and I was transferred from Falmouth to West Yarmouth.
Okay, and your resume is attached, and you pretty much have extensive experience and so forth, and have worked with this and other organizations before?
Yes.
And have general management responsibilities and also liquor management responsibilities, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any questions?
I just have one question. It says you serve safe, but you have your tips.
I think your certificate's in here.
The serve safe is, but I don't want to know if that's...
That's the serve safe alcohol certification.
Yeah, I think, I'm pretty sure that's approved, and it expires, where's the expiration? It was granted in June, it was issued June...
Yeah, three years. 100 days of examination, card expires.
Okay, so that'd be 2020.
Yes.
So let's go through 2020. It's pretty ministerial, I don't see any issues with it. Does somebody wanna make a motion? You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? Your application, folks, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I return with you. Okay, Madam Chairman, I return with you.
Next, we have the Commonwealth Community Developers for the motel redevelopment of Yarmouth Gardens Lower Lodge at 497 Route 28, West Yarmouth. Karen, did you want to?
Yeah, I think you have just a brief introduction.
Yeah, and if you could also, if you could go through the process that it's taken.
Yep, happy to. Happy to. I'm Karen Green, I'm the Director of Community Development for the town. And with us tonight are Jim Corrine and John Winslow, who've been working on a redevelopment proposal for 497 Route 28. It's the Yarmouth Gardens Motel. Yarmouth Gardens is, I think it's the oldest motel on Route 28. The project came forth through the efforts of our Affordable Housing Trust, who put out an RFP to seek a developer to develop the site. That RFP was issued in January of 17, of 2017. The Affordable Housing Trust, and we have Mary Wagan here too, who's the staff person for the trust. I think without, I think that it's safe to say the trust was very impressed with the response from Commonwealth Community Developers. It was a very thorough response, answered lots of questions, they were good partners through the interview process. In June of 2017, the trust made an award of $1.2 million to move the project forward. In a nutshell, the project consists of 40 units of affordable housing. The motel today is 43 rooms. Per the trust's suggestion and their easy agreement, a neighborhood meeting was held in September of 2017. Once the meeting was held and final plans were determined, they started on the regulatory process. Regulatory process started with design review in October, site plan review in November. The housing committee made an approval in November and the planning board issued a special permit in December of 2017. So I just, I want to give Staff at Town Hall, the planning board and the design review committee props for a really expedited review process and a good proposal that made it easy to review. So with that, these guys are here to ask for the Board of Selectmen to support the project through a letter to the Department of Housing and Community Development in their efforts to seek funding to help support the project.
Hi, my name is Jim Corrine, I'm President of Commonwealth Community Developers. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you for giving the project your attention. We think we've got a very good project, one that's certainly needed. And I do want to say, the community process is generally very important for us because we feel not only is it important for the people who are, who are going to be affected, the neighbors, to have a say, but also, I think, going through the process, even though in a sense as a developer, I could say sometimes it's painful, but generally, we wind up with a better project than I think, I think we have here. We've got, we're proposing 40 apartments, a mixture of one, two, and three bedrooms, I think four of the units will be three bedrooms, a dozen one bedrooms and two dozen, two bedroom units. All of them will be affordable. And the vast majority will be affordable for people who have incomes up to 60% of the area meeting in town. And so, so for a family of four, that's like $54,000. For a single person, it's maybe $37,000. And for all the household sizes, it's in between. Some of the, a few of the units will be restricted for somewhat lower incomes. That is partly a requirement of the state. So we, at any rate, we've got what I think is an attractive project. We've got, in addition to the apartments, we've got, there's a playground in the back, there's a community room with a cathedral ceiling, there's, we have the required 60 parking spaces, we've got good landscaping, we, and also a bus shelter in the front, every And I think, again, all of the, our, our objective is for someone to be able to drive by or go into the property and not know that it's affordable housing. And I think if you look at the design, that's, you know, you don't look at that and say, this is a project. And that really, we, it's important to us, not just in the design, but also in the way that we manage. So, so we want to be long-term owners and neighbors here in Yarmouth. And my wife's not, lives in Yarmouth, and if we're not, we'll hear about it. At any rate, I'd like to turn it over to John Winslow from Winslow Architects, who is responsible for coming up with the design.
Thank you. Again, my name is John Winslow, Winslow Architects, and I appreciate the time and attention and the dedication. It's been rather, from our point of view, rather impressive, rather organized community effort. We've helped with it, I think, at least four times, with the boards down there and with the community. And I guess I'd like to think that the city's time to get a little better. I understand the nature of speed, I've been talking on broad generalities, I'm happy to go as deep as you wanted to specifics, but from the biggest, biggest picture, this is, we're designing buildings that we like to paint. We're just now Cape Cod style housing, that is, that is our, I don't speak, but we're designing houses for 35 years. We do a lot of affordable housing. We designed the development, this is a site plan, there's two buildings, 20 units each. We thought it would be best to face the ends of the buildings towards the street here, Route 28 out here, so that the appearance of the development that go by the street is, you're seeing, you're seeing the narrow end of the building. It's a rather long building, but the facing to the street is as much a possible risk as it could scale. So this is a rendering viewed from Route 28, this is a rendering looking at the back of the development. This site plan, there's two 28s here, there's a common driveway, parking in the back, some parking in the front. One of the things that came out of the process of working with the town boards is this building is pulled back some so that it does not strictly parallel to each other. There is some parking up front. We've done everything we can to maintain the existing required setbacks. The only violation to the site setbacks came in the desire to stagger the building, really, both our own design sets and the town's requirement to break up the massing of the building. So the building has a lot of this, which you can see in the plan here, which puts us several places, 22 feet to a lot line instead of 25 feet. However, I will point out that the, the existing, this is a diagram showing the existing buildings over the, the new buildings, the buildings in the dark are the existing buildings, existing motel. Quite close to the lot line in both cases, the lighter building and the building actually that we're proposing. So in both cases, we're pulling this inside as best we can. The elevation of the buildings, again, in an attempt to, let's say, keep New England to my blood, and I know it is down here, we, we're wanting to break up the mass in the building as best we can with the design in the buildings. We're using a variety of materials, a variety of colors, claverts and shingles. And we are using cementitious siding, which probably, where, that's a very common building type these days. If you find anybody to tell the difference between wood clavert and cementitious clavert, you do know, we've been kind of fighting for this in the industry itself, you can tell the difference between a cementitious shingle and a wood shingle. They still don't have that right because industries are intent on making it perfect and cementitious shingles are perfect and wood shingles aren't. It's funny how you know that. So we tend to keep the shingles up high rather than at the ground level. So this is, this is the overall, the site plan, the engineer is not here today. It's been fully engineered and vetted by the committees. I'm not going to do the engineering at this point, I'm happy to ask any questions. The built, the units themselves are, they're one, two and three bedroom units. The buildings are quite similar between building number one and building number two. In this case, this is the first and second floor. I'm not getting into the details of the units unless you want me to here. So I'm going to say that we have included within each unit a very large storage closet in addition to regular closets. We're aware of that being an issue in housing. And so we worked quite hard to build that into the design. This happens to be building two, which is the building which has a community center in it. This building tends to have more than one bedroom units. The building across the drive has a playground in the back, so we've clustered the three bedrooms and had that into that building. Other than that, the buildings are pretty much the same. It's a slab on great construction. We are proposing there's going to be a partial basement for mechanical systems that's still under, under design as to how this can actually play out. So we'd like to think that this has responded to the request to provide decent affordable housing. We'd like to think this design is, and the style is comfortable to the surroundings as best we can. So I think I'm going to leave it there and I'm happy to answer any questions if you want to give us the details.
And we're now in terms of our, our own schedule. We had a deadline of November 30th for applying, doing a preliminary application to the state for, for the tax credits and other funding that we need. We got that in, we were approved, and now the final application, which, which involves a very large submission, if it were paper, to be about six inches thick, is due on February 15th. And, and that's, and then we kind of sit tight, continuing in a slow way on the development of the, you know, tweaking the plans and finalizing them. We'll hear in several months and if we get the award, then we will proceed a few months after that to the closing. By the time all the lawyers get their thing together and then the day after the closing, we want to start construction. So, so at any rate, I, I appreciate your, your consideration. I hope that you'll, you'll find, find it appropriate to, to give us the letter that, of support that we like to include with our, our tax credit application. And if you have any questions, feel free.
Okay, in terms of public hearings, the special permit was advertised. Can I offer a little bit more on that? So this, this went through the public process in that the Boards and Committees, the Affordable Housing Committee, the Community Housing Committee, and the Planning Board are all public bodies. So their meetings were publicized with the Town Clerk and with the Planning Board, of course, you had direct notification to a butters within three hundred feet. It was also, we, the trust also requested that the project proponent contact the neighborhood before all these meetings happened in town. It was, it was a condition of their award. So they had a neighborhood meeting and they invited anybody within 300 feet of the site to come and meet with them before it went to like the Planning Board. The plans were also on our website and were available in my office for public review.
So, so Mary, that, that meeting was not something that's required by, by the town or anything of that nature? That it was something that the trust asked for and, and that the proposers went, went through? Were there any things in that public discussion that were considered in the design process?
The fence. It really impacted the fence. The neighborhood wanted to make sure that there was not going to be any light pollution onto their property. If you know that site, there's some nice residential areas right behind it. So they didn't want to see the cars coming in and out and they didn't want any light from the general lighting of the site to spill onto their property. And if you notice on the top of that rightmost board on the top, it's a wooden fence, it's an expensive fence. And in the front, it changes from a solid six foot to a four foot with a lattice structure on top.
Right. This is the concern with the folks in the back, we know that these folks live here in very nice, they've lived their whole life, and so they were concerned about light coming through here. So there was a, there's a tall enough fence here, now, A, to protect that, and B, we had to put it up. We have, we have a lighting plan that shows that this, the upper the light perimeter meets all the dark sky standards for sites itself, so.
And the trust is getting pretty good, knowing what our neighbors, you know, expect. And for example, their first design had balconies and patios. And so we asked them to remove those. People down on the Cape, it's, we get plenty of fresh air going to the beaches and our beautiful parks. That way, people that are above the property wouldn't be impacted with people being outside and talking too loud and that kind of stuff. I believe the playground is not lit at night, which I think that was one concern. They didn't want the playground to be lit all night long and people up there. So, you know, like many people on the place, the neighbors like they're quiet and I think this is going to be okay. Okay, Mary, do you have any questions?
I do. Thank you for the presentation. Just, I have a background question for Karen and Mary. How many units is the Cavalier?
Sixty-nine.
So let's call it seventy, and average it. So, here's my issue. I think the buildings are very attractive. I'm an advocate for affordable housing and a big proponent of revitalization. What I have a hard time with is two developments, 200 bodies within a little more than a half a mile radius of one another and what that is going to do in terms of straining our resources. You know, I assume the timeframe for both of these developments is going to be pretty close. They'll probably all hit the market about the same year. You know, you can do traffic studies and that sort of thing, but what you can't study and what you can't predict is the strain on the resources. It's a tremendous amount of people in what I would consider a relatively small area on the busiest road in town. I was in favor of the Cavalier project and I'm not opposed to this project. I'm just concerned with the number of people and the resources that we have to build under ever, or increasingly small or, you know, strained budgets. So that, you know, that's where I'm at. Again, I'm not opposed to the project per se, I just, I don't like the timing. There's nothing.
I think, I think, I think, yeah, I think when we looked at the growth incentive zone with Cape Cod Commission, I think that was.
I mean, and you were, I mean, I think you're full well aware of the provisions of the growth incentive zone and the build-out analysis and that we, we demonstrated to the commission that the, the impact in both trips and wastewater was, was kind of neutral, in a, in a sense, with the development of, of housing in place of hotels. So it could be a hotel, there's more, you know, intense uses, that could certainly be, be allowed here. I think in terms of timing, a couple things, and I don't want to speak for the trust. I think that this project, we've got the first application in and hopefully it will move forward. We've got our fingers crossed that that will happen, but that may very well not happen. Sometimes these tax projects take a number of tries. Johnson and School is a good example, that took, I think, three or four.
It was like three full, physical years.
Yeah, it, it took quite a while. So that may help mitigate kind of your, your concern of everything happening all at once. So that may help mitigate kind of your concern of everything happening all at once. I think that the two projects are, you know, they're a big deal for Route 28. They absolutely are, and I think it was... It's been in the works for, you know, ten, eleven years going on, and it's happening. I don't think that you'd be concerned about a continued trend. I don't know that... That's where I don't want to speak for the trust, but I don't know that this, you know, the motel redevelopment program will continue at this pace. So I think between those two things, the two projects are manageable and we'll be watching.
I'll make a comment, and I'll do that after I get answers to a couple of questions. I wondered if you could talk about, Eric hit upon it, traffic, and what your thoughts about that have been, and how, first of all, what are the exits and so forth, and, you know, the multiple exits onto town roads or just onto Route 28?
It's just...
And then, secondly, septic systems, and, you know, what's going to be done of this sort?
First, the exit is onto Route 28. That's where all of the incoming and, you know, and outgoing traffic will be. My experience is that oftentimes with affordable housing on the Cape, depending on where it's located, not everyone has a car. Most do, but not everyone. That's one of the reasons why we're putting in a bus shelter, to encourage people to use the bus, make it a little bit easier to stand out there and wave the bus in. I think that, and certainly, there are certainly plenty of sources of employment and shopping on and along Route 28, so I think that that, anyway, represents, I think, a somewhat mitigating feature on the traffic. And as Karen said, I think, given that there were 43 rooms in the motel, plus a manager's apartment, plus an owner's apartment, I would see that, at least during the busy season, that we will probably not have, or be comparable in terms of the amount of traffic that we generate. Obviously, in the off-season, we're occupied here around, the motel is not, so that will be a difference. In terms of the septic system, we... I didn't ask the engineer to come with us tonight. It's... There is a technical phrase, it's something like alternative innovative, that's what it is, thank you, innovative septic system, that does have a specific meaning, and that's what we're doing. So it's kind of, it gives a... We don't have to have a treatment facility, you know, an actual treatment plant, but it does give some chemical treatment to the waste as it is dispersed into the septic field. So I think that will be a considerable improvement over what's there, and that will take care of a lot of the nitrogen, as well as the other elements of the septic system.
Great. Thank you for those comments. I just wanted to say generally, first, I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust as the select board member, and, you know, the timing of these proposals is very difficult to predict. We've tried to keep things in the pipeline and think about, okay, we've got one proposal in process, what else might we consider? What other types of housing might we consider? And do we have access to other pieces of property throughout the town that might be suitable? So, you know, it's kind of, as opportunities come up, it's important for us to seize on them. And so it's rather difficult to control from the standpoint of exactly what we're going to get done, and there's a lot of variables. So the other thing is that, you know, generally speaking, I think the town, through its votes in support of affordable housing and for funding transfers to the Affordable Housing Trust, has really signified its support for development of this sort, for housing in particular, affordable housing. And secondly, to revitalize Route 28. And I think this and the Cavalier are really the town putting its money forward and supporting major initiatives that are both economic development and are affordable housing. So I think this is very helpful for our town, and I'm very hopeful that, both with the Cavalier and this proposal, we'll see additional investment by private partners that will really stimulate further growth in the town in terms of revenues to support everyone. So I'm very enthusiastic about this, and I think the proposal, I think, was very well done. Made it very attractive from the start, and your folks have been very easy to work with from our town perspective, so.
I like the design, but like Eric, you know, I have a lot of concern about the number of units when added to the Cavalier project. About 109 units, I don't really see a bus stop doing much to mitigate traffic, or people walking to work really from there. I think that's kind of speculative. And Route 20 is a very, very busy place to be walking. So I do have concerns about them coming online together, or maybe doing reasonable proximity to each other in terms of time. And the other concern that I have, not with respect to this project, but to affordable housing on 28 in general, is if you're going to be putting housing in your commercial districts where you're going to do your commercial redevelopment, that's a big, a big issue to me. And I think, I mean, housing, the demand's there. There's, the Cavalier is well underway. I'm not saying that I, that I'm trying to undo anything that's been done, but I just think in terms of planning, where is the commercial growth going to take place if we have all of, or a lot of available spaces on Route 28 devoted to housing? Granted, both projects are a lot better than what was there, I don't deny that, but I'm not so sure that the analysis is as simple as that.
Mark?
First of all, thank you, thank you for the presentation. And I echo a little bit Mike's concern, but I think that problem is really falls on us as a community to address in terms of making sure that we plan for and provide the adequate infrastructure that's necessary to support additional development opportunities, particularly commercial development. So I certainly agree with the point, but I don't. I think that's an issue that we as a community have to, have to address. When are we going to deal with this? When are we going to put this as a priority? When are we going to figure out a way to finance it? I think that becomes, that's the question, the big question. And the reality is, is that until we do that, these are the types of opportunities that really are available to us to pursue, and then we as a community have to weigh how best to plan them and how best to work with the neighbors and residents to try to make them fit, so that you get a development that meets a need and the community has neighbors that they're very comfortable having in their community. So I think that that becomes the focal point for where we are right now. What I'm curious about is, before, when I picked up my packet on Friday, I was told that we as a board would not need to vote on this. Normally, I like to do my homework and get my questions done before I come to a meeting, so I was just notified just, reached literally before walking in the door, that there would be a vote required on this. So there are a couple of things that I'd like to ask staff that would sort of better help me out. For example...
Yeah, so...
What was the mix-up? I'm just curious about how did we get that...
It was two, two reasons, right, to come here. And so one of them was that the Affordable Housing Trust found out through the Cavalier process, the redevelopment by Dakota, that the regulatory agreement that goes on these types of developments, low-income housing tax credit projects, that's a two-party regulatory agreement between the project proponent and the state. Normally, everything we develop in town for affordable housing is a three-party. It has the town signature on it, too. So when that was explained to the trust, the trust said, "Oh, we need to involve the Board of Selectmen." And so that was part of the agreement with, between the trust and community Commonwealth developers, that a formal presentation will be made to the Board of Selectmen. So at the point when I was working with the Town Administrator's Office about this meeting, that's... I had a quick discussion with Jim Perrine here, and he said, "Oh, I need a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen." And that's when it got converted to a vote, because I'm assuming that the Board of Selectmen need to vote whenever they do a letter of support to authorize the chair to sign the letter. So that's what happened.
Yeah, I think one of the things that would be helpful for me as a selectman is that if there's going to be a project where the selectmen have to vote earlier, you know, earlier, that way, to the extent that their meetings, their public carings, their forums, their people that have concerns, I think for me, it would be very helpful to know early on when a project comes in that there's going to be a selectman vote required, so that I can participate in some of the meetings and hear what some of the residents and others have to say. I don't know if there's a way to formalize that somehow, but I think at a staff level or internally, if we could do that, I think that would be very helpful.
Thanks, David.
Yeah, I feel just a little uncomfortable being told at the last minute that, "Oh, by the way, we're going to vote on this." I also have a concern, again, this is not for the project developers, but basically, I just want to reaffirm the point that was made in the very beginning during public comments about the lack of awareness. Again, it's, I think we need to... This is an issue that comes up all the time. We didn't know, we weren't aware, why are we among the last ones to find out? And to me, that's an issue that we have to address internally in terms of, I mean, people have heard me complain about our website and our, you know, you need a Dakota ring to find things. It becomes very, very difficult to get access to agendas and other notices, and that my hope is that over time, we can find a more proactive way to keep people informed about the things that we're involved in. For example, when notices get posted, you know, they can subscribe to Twitter, or there's something, it's a feed where, as soon as that's posted, you automatically get that. I do think that there are people, not just in West Yarmouth, that have an interest in Route 28. There are people all throughout the town. So while the focus can be on providing, you know, a Butters' notices and notices to the people that live within the immediate vicinity, I think in this community, there are people all throughout Yarmouth that have an interest in the future of Route 28, and would certainly benefit from having the opportunity to participate in some public discussions and awareness of a project of this magnitude. So I think, I think that, again, this is sort of another, to me, checkpoint where we have to, you know, really expand the tools that we utilize to keep people informed of what's going on in the town. It's good, and, you know, sometimes when we do a public meeting, they're televised, sometimes they're not. So even, even the tools that are available sometimes aren't fully utilized. And I don't mean to direct these to you, Karen, or you, Mary, but I think it's a broader concern for the town staff overall and town administration, that there are lots of things that go on in this community that people want to be aware of and be plugged in on, and somehow, they only find out about this stuff at the last minute. It's a real issue, it's a real concern, and I just think we need to make a more aggressive effort to find ways to address it. So I'll just leave that there. Beyond that, it's nice to see Yarmouth doing well with the tax credit program, because with respect to affordable housing, the tax credit has become basically the only tool for housing development. What's happening is the tools in the toolbox are disappearing, and, you know, to the extent to which we've done this well is actually a credit to a lot of folks, including our own town staff. So I appreciate all the work that you've been doing on this. You're right, the level of work that's involved is enormous. So my sympathies to you for all the volumes of paperwork that you have to fill out, but it's, it's pretty intimidating. So that pretty much ends my commentary and my comments. I do have...